Okay, Commissioners, we're going to start with item number 10. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness at 313 West Fourth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, docket number 15-8114, block 615, lot 7. A Greek Revival-style row house built in 1836, and this is an application to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, alter the front facade, and replace windows.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Hillary Padgett, Preservation Department staff. This property is located on the east side of the street and retains its original pitched roof. And you'll see here that its sister buildings on the same block each receive a full-floor addition related to the roof. And the next slide I'll be showing you is marked in your booklets, probably easier to see inside. The applicant is proposing to modify the roof to accommodate a number added floor. And you can see the original roof line here. So this portion is what they're adding. They're demolishing an existing rear yard addition to construct a new addition and the excavated portion of the rear yard and construct a second patio. The applicant's constructed a mock-up, and only code-refered floor extensions will be visible over the restored cornice. Please note that in the description of the building, changes to the front facade and windows were noted, but these will all be reviewed as staff looking. The architect is here to present the application.
Good afternoon, I'm Eric Gardner from SDG Architects. And Hillary gave you the basics that we're covering today. We're basically working on a rear yard addition, for the most part, that is not visible from the street. You can see it's in a closed garden court. And we are putting in an excavated rear yard to help accommodate the rear yard addition. And we're coming out less than the existing neighboring excavated garden, which is at 311 just south of us. Here you can see our mock-up is in fact there, it's just not visible, although we have drawn in the extended floor extensions next door that are required because of our increased height. And more views of the house from the street there without --
What's that red dotted line indicate there?
Oh, that's our house. That's the house that we're --
I was just saying, this is our --
Yeah, exactly. Front facade, we are restoring the cornice and replicating what was there and maintaining the front door and replacing the windows. Here's the historic block. There are two other houses that have maintained the two-and-a-half stories of the original group of structures. That's 309, which has more of an extent, original detailing than 303, which was restored more recently. And the rest all have -- sorry, Olivia, thank you. So this is actually the cornice that we've been looking at as our inspiration for restoration. Here you can see from the front what we're doing. We are maintaining all of this and just restoring it, replacing windows as per staff requirements, re-pointing. We're adding this wood detailing, which was removed at one point in the past, and maintaining the slope of the roof, just extending it further back. And there they are, side by side. We're using a standing seam roof. 303 West Fourth has one. It's visible from the street, ours is not. And we're replacing skylights.
Is the original roof slate, or is that asphalt?
It's asphalt.
Do you have any idea what was really there, anything real under it?
And the house, I don't think there's very little remaining or residual. Slide one out.
Slide one out. Yeah.
Here's the existing detail. Now there's a skylight that's really not structurally sound or waterproof. The front gutter, the cornice has been removed, and water is kind of running down the front facade and causing some damage. So we're replacing the cornice with the originally detailed, or what we believe is the original details. And we're placing a skylight with a more viable skylight. But none of that is -- that's not -- anything behind the cornice line is not visible from the street. Here's down the street on the same block, the standing seam roof. Here you can see it from the corner of Bank Street. Again, you can't see our -- there's our mock-up, basically extending the line, the diagonal line of the front slope. That's our cornice addition. There is our extended floors on our neighbor. We're removing these visible vents as part of the restoration, so that those will disappear. You can see that they're actually sort of a prominent part of the existing roof scape. Sorry. Okay. So in the rear, the photos here, this is the neighbor's excavated rear yard, which you can see is about 50 percent of the rear yard. This is our existing condition. It's definitely a 20th century addition. It was not documented. There's no evidence of it at the building department, unfortunately. But you can see it was a sort of a slapped-on rear addition. There's the original slope of the roof with the deck above it. This is our neighbor's fence to the north, and our to the north as well, the rear yard. I think you'll see in plan that we're not aligning with either rear facade, and that's because there was no evidence of the existing garden structure or the rear yard addition. So zoning asked us to do a proposed foot setback. We actually pursue quite strongly to align with the neighboring facades, and we're not granted that because of the lack of an existing addition. So we're doing a -- so this is existing, and we're maintaining the rear spring line of the roof. We're taking this two-story addition and modifying it to be a tripartite facade out of steel, and then matching those windows up top. This is a generator and parrotted on the generator on the top of the roof. There's the exposed structure, pretty much revealing -- of the rear yard addition, pretty much revealing that it's not an historic, old, original.
So in the rear facade, the proposed rear facade, which part is the historic portion of the building? Is that that? Okay. And then above that, it slopes back, or it's straight up?
Yes, we'll see in a section, I think, shortly, but you can see how we're maintaining that spring line of the original. Okay? And this is the existing condition and the new of the rear yard.
In existing, what is that second?
That's a -- you may have seen it in the photograph. I could go back to it if you'd like. That's sort of a funky '70s skylight greenhouse bump-up that allowed that rear room upstairs to be occupied, basically based on this either --
This is on track.
Which is the spring point? Sorry, where's the spring point that you were talking about? Is it that, where the -- you see the cornice?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and in this picture, it's lower down?
It's further down.
Okay, so --
Right, so that we could show more of our addition.
I see, okay.
This is some of the rear yard details. So here's the existing building section, and here you can see what's there now. We're actually coming back from that line, actually behind both of those. There's that funny little skylight addition that you saw in the section. There's the existing front cornice and the sightline from across the street. Here you can see our cornice is slightly higher, just to match the original detailing. None of this is visible. That's all verified with the mock-up. And you can see how we pulled this back several feet. We are excavating, but less than the neighbor. And we are using that line as our spring line, as Hillary pointed out earlier, and then setting back our top floor from that, so there are some visible roofs. These are some plans that -- probably this is the one that's the most interesting to you. Here's the existing rear yard addition and the small excavated area here. And here we've extended our excavation, actually pulled the addition back slightly to allow for the 30-foot setback. These are upper floor plans.
Okay. Are there questions for the applicant? Are there any questions? Yes, Diana?
So you were saying that your addition is actually coming back, was comparing the tools and the seed, it looks like?
Yes, yeah. And that's because there'd be very strict zoning now, so we had applied for a 28-foot setback, which would align us with 315 West Fourth's, and they didn't disallow that. And we're not going to pursue the variance on that.
So with regard to the other premises near you, you're not extending beyond the --
Or behind both of them?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll take a public testimony.
Good day, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name's Sana Afzar, and I represent the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. And we feel that there is too much glass proposed at the rear facade, and that the overall design here overwhelms the row house itself. We ask that this be modified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. HDC generally finds the proposed changes to the front facade to be appropriate, especially the wood paneling at the top story. However, the rear represents too much of an intervention on this intact row house, with an overwhelming amount of glazing and additional bulk. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? All right, we received testimony from Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation, and what they have said is that there's too much glass proposed at the rear facade, and that the overall design here overwhelms the row house itself. So they've asked us to look at that very carefully and to modify it. Community Board Two has also weighed in. They recommend approval of the demolition of the existing rear yard, the bulk of the proposed rear yard to be approved. However, said the design of the proposed addition be denied because penetration is not in harmony with the building and has no historical reference, and does not respect the three openings divided by piers in the original rear wall. And so it's resolved the demolition of the original rear wall, modified with taller openings, be denied in order to preserve the integrity of the house and to justify the rationale of the rear yard addition as a T-room. Okay, they support certain aspects, but not all aspects of the community board. Would the applicant like to make -- give any response to some of these comments? It seems several have noted the rear facade and the amount of glazing that you've proposed?
I think --
And are there ways to address some of their concerns?
I think actually, if you look at the three facades next to each other, we in fact have very similar amounts of glazing to this house. We actually have less glazing to the house to the north. I think it's very in keeping with the garden in the village, and we're not really doing anything extraordinary at all in this case.
I would agree. That doesn't seem as though the amount of glazing impacts negatively the rear yard or neighbors in this case.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Right, thank you.
Just in terms of the top of your building, so it's what, how many feet is that above? What it wants to be for? Is it like four?
It's probably about six feet, I think.
And these buildings, were they done at the same time? Do they have anything to do with each other, adjacent? The building to your left?
It's my understanding that all of these row houses were built at the same time, or near, at least the same time. And that there are three of them that have the two-and-a-half-story front facade remaining. We're very respectful of that, and we think that is very important to maintain that original three, two-and-a-half-story front facade. We have a lot of additional square footage available to the ownership, and we try to do it as discreetly as possible with no impact on the street anyway.
And you can't see, you're saying that you can't see? Do you say that you can't see the rear, the that addition on the top at the rear?
Correct. We did a mock-up.
Which, you know, it's here.
Yeah, no, it's -- I mean, it's all sloped, and when you see it in elevation, it does look taller. But the mock-up has been reviewed thoroughly, and it's just not visible from the street, sorry.
Because of the incline, right? Because you've continued the same --
Because of the continued slope, exactly.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing then. Okay, concerns, comments on this addition? Yes.
I think it's -- the front is fine, and the lack of visibility of any of the changes is laudable, and therefore not an issue really for me, at least here. I think the back is marginal, but, I mean, only six feet higher than the two neighbors. And again, none of that's visible from the public way persuades me that maybe, even though it's a little more aggressive, because it's higher and it's closer to the donut, it still does not overwhelm the house or the neighbors. And so I think it's acceptable, and I think the design, the design is fine. It was never a question of the articulation of the glass and so forth. I think that's very well done. The issue for me was just the bulk at the top, and I think it's close, but it's okay.
Yes, Michael.
I think that -- I agree with Fred. I think that in the scope of things that we've seen here, this is very reasonable. I think that the rooftop extension could be -- it looks to me, and I'm not looking at any technical drawings, but if I look at the section drawing, which I guess, I don't know, it's not numbered, but the -- it looks like there's a little bit of fat up there on the roof just to make the peak, and maybe that can be, you know, just to keep a peaked roof. And maybe that can be shaved down with staff to try to -- it looks like it's a three-foot-two dimension from the top of the finished ceiling to the peak of the --
Right, and it's unnecessary.
Finished roof. Maybe some of that can be shaved down and just make it flat, and, you know, it'll --
No.
All right. You know, I don't think it makes a difference to me either way, but if there are concerns about the height, which I don't think will be perceptible in real life, I think that, you know, you got a flat roof there anyway.
Well, you have a flat roof.
Well, that middle area where the skylight is? If you look in the section, you know, the skylight's kind of, you know.
Even though you -- I guess our question is, is -- my question is, if we're saying that as long as you can't see it, everything could be okay, I think that there are some other reasons we're doing things besides just the fact that maybe you can't see it from the street. And I think maybe in this case, because there are three buildings that were done at the same time, that are sister buildings to this building, that there's something to be said for maintaining at least the form of the roof or the roof line. And raising that those extra feet, I think destroys that --
I'm sorry, Roberta, so --
I think raising the roof destroys the --
The roof.
Yes, it does, actually. The character of that roof adjacent to its two neighbors, that's what I'm arguing.
All right, even though it's a notch, you can't see it.
Yes, you can say that maybe it's hard to see, but I don't think that that's the reason for everything that we do.
Right. Although I would just say, and I agree, I think it's contextual, it's different neighborhoods. But I think what I've seen in the past is we've done rooftop additions where they're not visible from the street, and from the rear, they're higher than what you have originally. But we've always made them set back three feet to ensure that we have the historic building line. And in this case, while it's not really -- it's set back, but it's set back through a slope, because in fact, historically, it seems to have been a slope. So I would say, just in terms of consistency, some of the elements that they've used is very similar to what the commission has adopted time and time again, quite frankly, I've seen it so many times. We've allowed rooftop additions, and -- but I think, I personally, again, I think this -- in this context, this seems appropriate. And if there are ways to bring the roof down, to make it flat, the impact is not really from the street, but it's really from the rear yard. So if that, if people feel that they would like to reduce that, I don't have an issue with that. Other Commissioners? So Roberta?
No, I was going to say, you know, that when you were talking about how we ask sometimes for there's something to be pulled back from the roof, I mean, the rear, that's like what happens if it's flat. But when you have a sloped, you know, or a peak, I think that that peak is part of what was established, the character of that house and its neighboring houses. And so I'm like looking at how to respect that. That's what I'm saying. You know, so it's not the flat roof. Yes, we could pull it back, and it, you can say it's pulled back, but I think that there has to be some other kind of rule, because it's not a flat roof. So I think it's still too obvious, too.
All right, are there any other Commissioners also feel similarly to that, or should we proceed? Yes, Chris?
If the rooftop is not visible, that is our first argument. If you can't say it?
Well, let's be clear, Commissioners, it's not the case that just because it's not visible, anything goes. Anything goes. The commission has, in various iterations, preserved the slope of the rear of a pitched roof on many occasions for a variety of reasons, depending on context. Earlier today, we had an issue with a pitched roof that we were looking into. So it's just, there's, it's not a hard and fast rule that anything goes. It's, the commission wants to see something, some reference, or somehow some reference to that pitch.
Right, which is why, I mean, what you called, described as fat, I thought was at least an attempt to do what you requested or are pointing out, which is to continue or to respect that pitch, or the fact that there is a pitch. So this is kind of a continuation, one would say, maybe, you know, would it be possible to continue, to do that on the other side, on the rear side? In other words, it flattens out at some point. What's a little bit ingenious about the design, I think, is that it does fatten this pitch. So you get extra height, but continue to have the, kind of, the house pitch, right? So that's, I think, a very interesting approach. The question is, is it complete? Does it really do that in the back, you know, in the rear? It doesn't. So it's a kind of like, it's a hybrid. And so it doesn't quite solve the one issue of wanting to continue the pitch, and it doesn't solve the other of wanting to maintain the height limit.
It's a ski house section that you normally don't see in your system.
That too.
Right, and I think the choice of words ingenious is right, because there are certain constraints to what you can do under that pitch. And I think the idea that they've taken a design to continue that pitch, I think, as you said, sort of respects the fact that this is a pitched roof, it's not a flat roof. But that also gives certain limitations of what you can do in the space. I think if, essentially, if we feel that we want to allow, if we feel strongly about the pitch at the rear, which seems to be in question, and I think they've done some gesture to that, because they provided some slope, it's just that at some portion they haven't, they kept it straight up. If we feel strongly about retaining that slope, then in some ways, that takes off a good portion of their addition, and I don't think there's a way around that, just by, at least in this section. And I don't know how critical it is to them and how critical it is to the commission.
If you go all the way --
Yes, Michael.
I think that, for me, what makes this appropriate is not necessarily the sheer volume of the addition per se, or that it is or isn't overwhelming the house, but it's the fact that this isn't really, or that the row of houses, of which this is one, is a significantly modified row, and that there's a lot of difference from house to house. So if this were a row of intact two-and-a-halves pitched roofs, I think that one's view, my view of modifying that ridge in the back would be different. And when I think about the cases where we have looked at rear facade sloped roof modifications, they have generally been to federal houses where there was some extant dormer or something, and we were being asked to modify that dormer or something. And we have given some leeway on that, but we've always asked for some retention of it. But I think that, I think that here, where you have a real kind of culture of modification of these roofs, I think this is pretty modest. And I think the fact that they are keeping the two-and-a-half in the front, they're keeping two-and-a-half in the back, they're keeping really the volume of the house in a way that is much more generous to the historic structure than we've seen in a lot of other cases, I think for me merits some leeway in terms of the volume added to it.
I agree with Commissioner Gogblum. The inconsistency was created a long, long time ago. It wasn't created by this house, it was created by changes that were made a long time ago. So, you know, there's, if an inconsistency continues, and it's done sympathetically, I'm not really concerned about it.
Any other comments? All right, I know, Roberta, you have concerns about this, but I think the rest are okay. All right, and we don't need to modify it then, so I think we can take it to both. John, do you want to read it?
And the matter of certificate of appropriateness for docket number 15-8114-313 West Fourth Street, Greenwich Village Historic District. Application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, alter the front facade, and replace windows. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed dormer addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed addition will be constructed on the rear-facing slope of the pitched roof, and will maintain the angle of the front-facing slope, thereby preserving a sense of the building, original, building's original roof line, that the adjacent sister buildings were historically altered with the conversion of the pitched roofs into full-floor additions, and therefore the proposed dormer addition will not disrupt a continuous roof scape of pitched roofs, that the base of the rear-facing slope of the pitched roof will be maintained below the dormer, referencing the original volume of the pitched roof, that the full-width dormer addition, featuring a large assembly of multi-light metal casement windows, will be evocative of studio windows and dormers, that the proposed chimney floor extensions will be seen in context of -- That the proposed chimney flue extensions will be seen in context of other rooftop accretions and will not call undue attention to themselves. That the removal of the existing rear yard addition will not result in the loss of any significant historic fabric. That the design of the proposed rear yard addition, featuring painted wood paneling and multi-light metal windows and doors with a spandrel between floors, will recall the symmetry, configuration, materials, and finishes found at historic T porches and other rear additions at buildings of this type and age. That the proposed excavation resulting in a below-grade terrace at the rear yard does not extend to the rear lot line, thereby preserving the presence of a rear yard. That the block features other two-story rear yard additions with excavated terraces and larger tenement and apartment buildings. Therefore, the scale of the proposed rear yard addition and type of site alteration will be in keeping with the varied character of this block. And that the proposed work will not diminish the special character of the building or the Greenwich Village Historic District.
All in favor? Any opposed? This resolution's been passed.